This is the July 11th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. It is 6:31 and we are the Select Board's ready to adjourn. I'm going to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda as read. Public comment, I think Mary Moore may have a public comment tonight. Am I correct, Mary? Okay. And so items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the consideration of year-end transfers. Deb severing the Finance Director. Item number two is the Community Center Discussion on the HVAC System Replacement. Item number three is a consideration of appointments. Robert Wolf to the Metro West Transit Authority for a term to expire June 15th, 2027, and Robert Wolf to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a term to expire June 15th, 2027. The consent agenda is the payroll warrant draft minutes of May 30th, June 11th, and June 27th, and Select Board reports and Town Administrator reports. I'm going to ask the Select Board if they can amend the agenda by removing the June 27th draft minutes from this meeting, please.
Okay, do I have any motions relative to the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda with the amendment proposed by Diane.
Sounds good. All in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann? That's an I. I read the lips. Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Very good. Okay, Dan, how do you look on numbers?
So we have a quorum now.
Oh, very good.
So if it's all right with you, I will start our meeting.
Please do.
So going to start the Sherburne Advisory Committee meeting of July 11th, 2024. And let me just spin through the agenda and then we'll just take a vote to either change or approve the agenda. So we're going to start with a year-end transfer, year-end transfers. We'll do that jointly with the Select Board. Advisory will then leave this link and go to the other link in the agenda to continue with just a little bit of other business, which will consist of liaison reports approving some minutes and further discussion of a possible letter to Regional School Committee. Any changes to propose to that agenda? Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Add a second?
My second.
Thanks. Okay, quick roll call. Wassim?
Hi.
Mike Winters?
Hi.
Penn?
You, hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mike Flanagan?
Hi.
All right, and I am I as well, so that gets us to 6:00. So we're good. And let me just slip in one other thing before we jump into year-end transfers, which is this is the last advisory meeting for some members of advisory who are rotating off the committee. So that'd be Natalie Weir, Wassim Basali, and Mike Flanagan. And I just wanted to, on behalf of the committee and the town, extend a big thanks for your service. You have all, Natalie's not here, she's traveling tonight, but all been really valuable contributors. I have really appreciated your input and counsel. We'll miss you, but really appreciate the time that you devoted to advisory in past years. So thanks. Just wanted to, while everybody's here, just wanted to slip that in. And that's it.
And I'll say thank you as well.
Thank you, guys.
I'd like to thank your volunteerism as well. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also.
Okay, so all that being said, I think that takes us right into Agenda Item Number One, consideration of year-end transfer.
Eric, there's a, there's a public comment that needs to be made by.
That's right. That's right. That's right. And seeing that, I just read off the, I just read what's in front of me. You know, it's like a teleprompter to me. It could be like the, it could be like the show Anchorman. All right, um, Mary?
Okay, thanks. So Arthur Fennell and I are on, and we just want to provide a quick public comment. We thank you for your time. This is, this was prompted by the published agenda for Monday for the Executive Session on Greenwood Homes and a presentation on the Affordable Housing Project Proposals by Bob Murchison. We just thought we'd share a few points that might be helpful for the Select Board and the public to hear in advance of that. The first one is that, you know, Brian and I really hope that the Select Board and others, you know, will not disregard or diminish the ZBA decision that was recently issued by negotiating with the developer in a way that could have a negative impact on a future appeal. And I'm probably singing to the choir on that, but I just think it's important, they're not all parties are involved in mediation right now, and we just think that, you know, it's important to keep an eye on the, on the full picture. I also think that, you know, providing a roadmap for other developers who might want to leverage 40B to eventually get favorable treatment on market rate housing is a really bad precedent and one we should avoid at all costs. You know, this particular applicant has chosen the 40B swim lane for five affordable housing projects in town, requiring significant time from boards and committees, and then changing the swim lane to either market rate or open space development, you know, does not, in our opinion, entitle someone to sort of continue where they are. They need to go back to start and, and, you know, get the required permits, just as everybody else does in town. You know, the applicant-proposed settlement was posted on the town website on 6/17, and, you know, thank you to Diane for circulating that so that more people could see it. We appreciate it, and Jeannie also. But, you know, at this point, we just really want to make sure that, you know, the, the process is followed, that voices are heard, and that, you know, that, you know, that if the swim lane changes from 40B to regular, that it's visible and transparent, and that the public has an opportunity to weigh into it. So Arthur, I think, had a few comments he wanted to share as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. You're hard act to follow. I second everything that Mary said. She, she and Brian and I have been following the, particularly the Farm Road 40B for some, for some number of months by now. And there are just, there are some things that concern me. That was a long process. It was fair. Everybody had a chance to put all their cards on the table. And then now it seems that there is a global settlement, which is re-characterizing certain things to try to gain some sort of post-argument advantage. Obviously, I'm more specific. I live at 58 Farm Road. I have more specific concerns for things that are more immediate to me, and those have been my focus. And so I don't mean to diminish or otherwise take away from any of the other projects or any of the arguments that may happen. But it's just something that, after the whole ZBA process, it's as if, almost like it never happened, or that this is an end run around that. We can talk maybe more on Monday about this, but just in particular, the applicant is looking for, and as he characterizes it, the town to resolve any lingering dispute on the validity of an expired restriction against subdivision. And that was an argument or an issue that I had pursued, that alerted the Select Board to probably two years ago by now. And there was no lingering dispute after the ZBA meeting. Everybody put all their cards on the table. The applicant's attorneys said what he had to say. I and other attorneys have said what we had to say, and there was no, there was no dispute in the end. Like, you know, we had the last word, he never came back. It was functionally undisputed. I understand that he wants to re-characterize that now, but that's, there, there really is no lingering dispute. Or if there was, he had the burden and the opportunity to, to resolve it at the time and never did. And to characterize it as an expired restriction, I think, you know, again, I think that's a misrepresentation at best, that, you know, he, he should have proved that at the time and, and never did. And so again, that was left unresolved, that it was valid and enforceable. And honestly, I mean, the whole idea that he would put it in there as an ask from the town, if it were expired, you know, really leads you to believe that he doesn't believe that it is invalid or expired, or he wouldn't ask for it. Like, that doesn't even make sense. So I understand that the Select Board was involved in some of the ZBA process, but, you know, fortunately for you, probably not all of it, because there was a lot. It was a long process, but it was, I just wanted to kind of give a sense of the time and effort and opportunity that everybody had to put their best foot forward, and everybody put their best foot forward. And it was effectively undisputed that that was a restriction on developing that property, really at all. And, you know, we can talk about this some more. I'm happy to always meet with the Select Board, either individually or talk about it in a public comment. But it's, it's disheartening to see that that is even an agenda item or even an ask from the developer after that entire time. And I wanted to give the Select Board some sense of the time and the effort and the process that went into that from being intimately involved, which I'm sure that you weren't as much as we are. So I thank you for your time, and I guess we'll wait and see what happens on Monday.
Thank you.
All right, then moving on now to Agenda Item Number One, consideration of year-end transfers. Deb Severi.
Yes, good evening. Thank you all for taking the time to meet to approve the transfers tonight. Per UMass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, by July 15th, all deficits in the operating budget need to be covered. The law states that the selectmen with the concurrence of the Finance Committee must approve the transfer. So the following departmental deficits have been identified and can be covered by the Reserve Fund. The deficits are, the request for transfers are as follows. The Select Board, $6,300. Finance Committee, $2,700. Legal, $93,800. Information Technology, $2,200. Election and Registration, $3,800. Town Buildings, $62,800. Snow and Ice, $2,200. Council on Aging, $3,400. And Board of Health, $17,700. For a total of $194,900 that needs to be transferred, needs to be transferred to cover the operating budget from the Reserve Fund.
All right, any questions from the Select Board or Advisory? And please use the raise hand feature. I have trouble seeing, especially with a lot of people. It looks like Paul has something, or Dan.
Yeah.
Dan, go ahead. Okay, Paul, you, oh, Dan, go ahead. Ben, I believe Paul's reaching for his, for the button.
Trying to find it.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Just wanted a quick word for Advisory members. You know, this is an opportunity to ask questions. I'm thinking about this as an opportunity for us to, you know, think about lessons that we might take for this going forward. As Deb noted, you know, these deficits have to be, have to be covered. So, you know, this is something that, at least in my thinking, we are going to want to approve all of these. I think it's just a matter of whether there are any that have popped up that warrant a bit of discussion or where Advisory members might want a bit of additional information. So again, Eric suggests using the raise hand feature, so if people have questions, you know, following along, I think Paul's next, but following along, please jump in and raise a hand.
Paul, I'll take your question.
So I can't find, I downloaded an update of my Zoom, and I can't find where the raise hand feature is. So.
It might be under Apps or something like that, or More. It might be under More, but either way, you can ask your question.
So my question really was for offline, I guess, for the Finance Director to provide a breakdown on the legal, the $93,000 of legal. What, what matters is it being spent on? That, I, I know you don't have that information right now, but.
Yeah, you're, you're right. I don't have that information right now, but I could get that to you, no problem.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how, how I can make a contribution to help with that.
Okay.
And I have a question, Deb.
Sure.
Be it the legal line item, or the one as a whole, or the line, or the total amount, how does either one compare to past years? Do you have any chance of previous years data?
For, for legal? Yeah, so this year, our total legal spending is $173,000. Last year, it was $141,000. The year before, $265.00. The year before that, $235,000. In FY '20, it was $206,000. So, you know, it, it jumps around a little bit. This is, you know, a little bit higher than last year, but definitely lower than FY '20, '21, and '22.
And how about generally transfers? How, what is, what do we see usually at the end each year?
Uh, you know, it, it varies a little bit. Let me just take a look here. Um.
If you don't have it at your fingertips, that's okay. It's just more really curious than anything else.
I do.
The legal's a big variable. I don't think I'm too worried about seven grand for Advisory or six grand for the Select Board.
Yeah, I agree. So last year, when we did the request, we requested $178,000. The year before, it was $387,000. The year before that, it was $384,000.
So a good year this year. Jeff, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to point out, there's a couple of, one is we, we know we've had several lawsuits that we've been working on in town, for one thing. The second thing, another comment, and I don't know how this gets separated into funding, but whenever we have the school teachers' contract up, is that in the regional school budget, or do we pay our share of the legal costs in our legal budget? Because last year, we negotiated the teachers' contract for this pass.
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't see any of those legal bills directly to the town.
That's not in our legal budget then. Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, um, yeah, Dan.
Yeah, I just, since in the DPW budget, a lot of moving parts, a lot of pieces. I just wondered if Sean might be able to provide any color on, on some of those parts and whether there are any, any, you know, lessons to learn from that going forward?
Dan, do you mean the town buildings?
I do mean town buildings. Thank you. Yes, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Deb. I'm trying to do too many things at once. Apologies for that.
I mean, the big picture is, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts, you know, of the utility bills, there was almost a wash. The library, as we know, was significantly higher than we had anticipated. There was savings that more than made up for that because of the contract Jeremy was able to secure on the electric, so that was somewhat of a wash. But we, we know we have climbing, escalating maintenance costs on, on a lot of the items. It's no secret, the systems and the buildings are getting older, so. You know, a couple of years ago, we shifted, after many years of talking about shifting away from using capital funds for maintenance that was not capital maintenance. So sometimes that hits, you know, it's pretty significant. We had a, a pretty significant plumbing leak that cost a good bit of money, and that certainly was not a capital project. It was an emergency. Those, those things hit. And then, you know, it's hard to predict any specific lines. We, we try to, because it's, it's pretty well broken out in that budget, but one year you'll see you know, a fair amount of repairs on an elevator at Town Hall, and then the next year we'll see it at the library. Well, this year we saw it at the library. That was kind of power failure and probably voltage spikes that caused that. And then the fire station. But you have elevators that are 20 years old. They're gonna need maintenance, and it's, you know, sometimes it's expensive. So I think we, we, we knew, we, we, I, I tried to raise this budget a little bit more than we did, and we got some pushback, because, because at the time, you'll remember the budgets overall were, were very tight, so we, we pulled back a little bit. We did get the energy where we wanted, but we didn't raise the maintenance much.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that is, thank you.
All right, um. Penny, Pen Young? Sorry.
Thanks, Eric.
Please go ahead.
Thanks, Eric. I was just, I was just curious, like some info on the Board of Health overage specifically. If we're done with, with, and legal.
I don't see a represent Board of Health, so I, I mean, the best, who would be the best answer? Jeremy or Deb?
I was going to say Daryl is here. Daryl, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, how about the picture?
And Jessica is here as well.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Whomever.
I'll let Jessica handle the details. I'll give you a quick overview. Deb had provided what I found very interesting. A sheet about the fees that we've collected each year over the last three years, for applications, mostly for food permits and camps, and then the other, of course, is well-inseptic permits. And this year was 25% higher than the previous year. And this year, this, just the fiscal year that just closed was 33% higher than two years ago. And of course, the agents who we pay on an hourly basis, because they're part-time, both the food inspector and also the health agent who does the well-inseptic are paid hourly, and they're closely aligned with the number of permits and applications that come in, permit requests. So that would be one. So that's certainly reflected in their increased hours. We've also had more complicated projects, and that has taken more time with the various 40B projects that we've had. And there's one other issue. Oh, so the fee increase resulted in $14,740 more than the prior year, and that just about covers the increases in the budget. Also, and Jessica, if you have some additional details you might want to add.
Yeah, go ahead, Jessica.
Hi, everyone. I haven't had a chance to meet you all yet, but I'm really looking forward to working with you. I can't speak for how the department was run prior to me coming on board. I'm still new, and I'm getting acclimated. I've really only been in the position for two months. Based on the expense reports provided to me by Deb, I could tell you that our food inspector and our health agent did log an increased amount of hours due to the number of projects that we have had. I can tell you specifically for food permits, we've had a lot of seasonal food permits come in, mobile food trucks, especially in, in the nicer weather, for camps and outdoor activities particularly. Our number, which also includes four establishments, seasonal establishments, and regular permanent establishments for Sherburne for food, we've done 56 food permits that year-to-date. For the health agent, we, the number of hours that he's allotted is less than 20, but obviously he, per week, but obviously he's exceeded that amount greatly. And to avoid this in the future, I'm working on learning the ins and outs of my department, and I feel really positive that we could take some steps to avoid going over budget in the future as much as possible.
All right, does, um, does that answer the question reasonably? Okay.
I'd like to mention too that we used to get about a dozen permit, food permits a year. So we're at 50, was it 56% so far this time?
Yes.
Yes, so we're not even talking a full year yet, and we're at 56. So those demands have risen quite a bit. If we reach state farther, I would say, yes, maybe we could get the budget, get things back down to where they used to be, but it really does demand a lot of extra work.
I am in process of identifying the organizational component of the Board of Health right now, and how to streamline and create more efficiency with the department, so I'd like to put that on record.
That's great. I think that's a great endeavor to be doing that.
Great, yes, to have her fresh eyes. Certainly, the staff before has always looked for efficiency measures, so it's, you've got quite the challenge ahead of you, Jessica, so. Oh, but some of the software that Jeremy has been working on for permit and applications, I think, will help.
I can also speak to part of our budget. There's a line item, and it's for the Board of Health nursing contracts. So it looks like with our shared services arrangement with Dover, Medfield, and Needham, that we would be able to then have a regionalized, shared, public health nurse to assist us with any of the functions of that. So whether that be vaccine clinic, or home visits, or blood pressure clinics, or someone on retainer to assist with camp inspections, as we need to check immunization records and vaccination records of children who have summer camps. This person then in this role would be able to help assist our department, Tom, our inspector, and be better suited. So in, in that regard, we would not necessarily need to move forward with having a contract with the Native Walpole Nursing Association as we currently do now, and I believe that is allotted $8,280 in my budget.
That's a good idea. Nope, it's okay. I'm satisfied with that. That sounds like, it sounds like we're on a great path as well, and very nice to meet you, Jessica.
Thanks to meet you, Eric. I'm happy to also chat offline too.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll take up on that. Stephen, you had a question?
Um, yeah, actually, to go back to the town building budget, I just noticed the new equipment, $14,000 blah blah for charging station. I thought the charging stations were paid for by grants.
Jeremy, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can help.
Sorry, go ahead, please.
Yeah. The, yes, the, the majority of the new charging station, the rapid charging station, was paid for via a grant. Unfortunately, the, the grant didn't cover the entirety of that, of that project. So there, there was some, some cost that the town needed to bear to, to complete the project.
Okay.
Uh, Mike, Mike Flanagan, go ahead.
Just to go quickly back to the, the Board of Health, the Food Agent, just a general question. If, if a food truck is on Friday, Saturday, Sunday in Alston, Sherburne, Dover, does that food truck have to be inspected by all three towns individually, once a year?
A good question. We actually have brought up this issue as part of our new regional shared services that we've entered into, because they have more resources to pursue these issues. The other towns, there are four towns in this shared services. All the town shared our concerns that mobile food trucks were taking a lot of time, because it is being, efforts are being duplicated in multiple towns, and they've raised that issue up to the state level, and they are looking into that to find out if there can be a way to streamline it. But it hasn't happened yet, but I guess no one had asked the question before, so hopefully they'll figure out a different way to handle it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mary Ann?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm actually overall impressed by how close we come in the budgeting. It means that we're doing a reasonably good job at budgeting, but I note that in the town buildings budget, about, well, there's a shortfall of $62,000 some, but I have, in the second item, there's savings of $33,404 in electricity that was not used, so that offsets half of the shortfall. And I'm just wondering, I mean, that's, that's great, if, if I'm reading this correctly, but does that mean that we've over-budgeted electricity, or is that some change in, in the need?
That's what Jeremy described. Jeremy said that already. Or Sean did. Yeah, Mary Ann, we, after the budget was put together, we entered into a supply contract for electricity, so we realized a significant savings in our supply contract.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, and for FY '25, the budget, you know, that we're currently in, this current budget cycle that just started, we use the supply contract as the basis for the budgeting, so we've accounted for that savings in the proposed town building budgets for this current fiscal year.
Okay, great.
Does that factor in the aggregation? Is that what you just meant to say?
No, we had separate supply contracts, Eric, for the municipal supply. It's similar to the, the townwide aggregation, but we were able to do that for town buildings.
No, Freeman does the same thing. That's right, I know that. Negotiate, yeah.
But going forward, when, when those contracts are due, we could put the town buildings as part of the municipal aggregation program, or, or do our own bid as well for, again, to, to get municipal supply.
Actually, the own bid might be interesting. Yeah, that'd actually be interesting. I don't know. It's funny too. I don't know if we got such a good deal, if it's worth going into, be worth looking into it. We should have a sustainability coordinator by then to figure that out. Okay.
This was a big deal, though, that Jeremy and, with some help from Sean, I think, negotiated. This was a big accomplishment.
30 grand saving? Yes, it is. Absolutely. And that's, yes, it's on, it was only partial year this year, right?
Correct.
Absolutely. Jessica, you had something? Absolutely. Uh Jessica, you had something else?
Yes, sorry, not to jump around, but I believe it was Matt who asked the question about food trucks. So to Daryl's point, we do have a regionalized inspector inspector in position now. Who could assist with these types of inspections, especially if it would be on weekends. However, I do know um from my experience having worked in other towns that. There are regulations that uh the Board of Health has worked in tandem with the select board to regulate the operation of food trucks, which is something that we could. Look into as to their location, the amount of time that they spend, whether that's an annual permit, whether that's a seasonal permit. Um these are all things that we could talk about. The Board of Health, as for the Massachusetts Food Code, does have very specific criteria for food trucks. Um to operate, one of them being that they are required to provide the town in which they're applying um to. To participate in um for any event, they're required to provide a updated um recent current um food inspection. As well as their Hawk peddler's license, um as well as their serve safe certification, allergen awareness. Um so there are a lot of different moving parts with food trucks, and so. One of my priorities is looking at the application process from that end and seeing how we could best um align with not only our shared services. But with the way that our department processes the applications and approves those to be onsite in Sherburne.
Good to know. Looks like good to know. Okay, any other uh question comments relative to the transfer? Uh Daryl, you had something?
I just wanted to mention that we knew that the large projects were coming and we could have. Upped our budget projection last year because we know that they were on the horizon, however. The guidance has typically been to try to stay as close to whatever the prior year's budget had been. And then if needed, you know, do these year-end transfers, so. We're happy to adjust that approach if somehow it make it easier for advisory or other kind of planning. Or we we're fine with also continuing with that method.
Okay, I you kind of broke up, so maybe maybe we'll talk and. You know, if it has to do, let's just stick to this. So it didn't sound like it had to do with this, and I heard about every two out of three words, so I wasn't fully sure, but. Maybe take it on the point.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay. Uh Stephen?
Um yeah, I I always actually like to look also on the other side of the ledger here. So all of the departments that are, you know, under budget and. Uh kind of figuring out what's going on there. I mean, usually it's it's very well explained, um but just because. You know, that net over under seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars is, in a way, that's money that has been overtaxed, right? That the tax base um should should have been lower than that. This ultimately ends up, it's like one and a half percentage of the entire budget or something, so I. I I I think that this was, we've done quite well to come in within one and a half percent of our target budget. Um but I do like to look at the departments and see if there's anything that jumps out and just kind of ask about that, so police, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um do you know, Deb, what is that mostly from overtime or what was the reason?
Uh actually, it's because of lack of staffing. They were actually understaffed for the majority of the year. That accounts for about ninety-five thousand dollars of it.
But overtime didn't uh sort of uh.
Yeah, overtime went up, but the stat, the the salaries went down, so. They like and and the total budget, it was like ninety-five thousand dollars that they were under budget in the salary category.
Um, okay.
They are fully staffed now, so we'll see what happens in FY twenty-five.
Yeah, when they hire new staff, though, the staff has to go to the academy sometimes, and you incur overtime to cover the shift while they're at the academy.
It's just interesting because I remember when the police budget was a problem because it was. Year after year, you know, six digits over. It was because of staffing and the fact that they had to have a lot of overtime to fill in. All of the gaps and, you know, paying it out at overtime, you you know, it's one and a half times, so it just seems interesting that. That lack of staffing now pushes the budget in the opposite direction.
How how long ago? So we added four positions, what, two, three years ago? And one position might be gone because it was a, I'm not fully sure, one position might be gone because it was a, what do you call it, a dispatcher, whatever else, and I went to central dispatch. Um we might be seeing that as well as the dispatch levels as well, because some of the overtime was staffed because they didn't have a dispatcher.
That's right.
Covering dispatch.
Yeah.
Caused turnover because they didn't want to do dispatch, so we had a higher turnover rate.
Then you had younger people, yeah, less experienced people and blah, 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 blah. I think it was a, it was a bit of a story to that, and then plus we did, we did. Staff up. I want to say it was three years ago, and I don't know, again, it's not instantaneous. Anytime you approve three, four positions. You might not see the effects for a couple of years, so I think we're starting to see some of that, what I suspect. We can we can go on further with um, Tom's not here, I don't think we can um go on further with the chief, but that's just my gut, being in this for a few years. Uh Dan?
Uh just following up on Steve's point, Deb wondered if you could just say if a word about some of the other items. Where there were under that were related to vacant positions and, you know, that we were under because of salary issues.
Uh well, that would be true for there, actually, the library, uh they were uh short-staffed a little bit during different parts of the year this past year. That a conservation agent, sus- sustainability, uh the planning board, just a little bit. Um because, you know, after Gina left and and Heidi started. Um the combination of the treasurer and the collector, you know, that contributed it to it, so a a lot of it was staffing.
Thanks.
See, Penny Young had a question, but your hand is down. You you okay? Okay.
I am.
Okay, very good. Okay, if there's nothing else to this, what's his next step? I believe uh call for the votes of the two boards. Yeah, Paul?
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, please do.
I move that we approve the. Transfers as recommended by the finance director.
All right, for the select board, do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, so I'll collect the select boys' vote right now, and I'm assuming Daniel will do right after us. Um all in favor of Stephen?
Aye.
Uh Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. All right, Dan, the floor is yours.
Very good. Um can we uh just vote on the same motion? Do we need to make a separate motion? Anybody?
Separate motion.
Okay.
I mean, you can use the same words, but each each board is voting separate.
Perfect, perfect. Uh so then I would uh entertain a motion to uh approve a uh. Transfer to uh from the reserve fund to account for year-end transfers as uh spelled out by the finance director.
So.
Second?
I second it.
Thanks, okay. Um so roll call, uh Wasim?
Aye.
Uh Mike Winters?
Aye.
Uh Penn?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Uh Mike Flanagan?
Aye.
Uh Nora?
Aye.
And Shelley?
Aye, sorry I'm late.
No worries, thanks. Um and I'm I as well, so that gets us to ADO uh for advisory's approval of the year-end reserve fund transfers.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Advisory is gonna not close our meeting, but we're all gonna drop off and go to another link to take care of some other business. Uh. Some of us may be back if you're still going. Um so thanks, everybody, for a good conversation. Uh advisory, please, everybody jump to the other link. Thanks.
Thanks for joining us. All right, for the board and people in our audience, moving on to agenda item number two, Sherman Community Center, discussion on HVAC system replacement. Uh Jeremy, are you taking the lead on this one or at least taking the uh?
Yeah, I'll take the lead on this. Um I did forward the board an email uh received from Doug Furbish, who's the president of the Sherburne Community Center Foundation. Uh we had had a conversation a few weeks ago, uh where he brought to my attention that. Um they they were looking at um. The a a an improvement to install a new HVAC system uh for the first floor of the community center. Uh apparently, that system permanently failed last year, and in the interim, they've used some some portable units, which is. Has they're quite loud and noisy and are interfering with their ability to to rent the space. Um so they've done some investigation as far as the potential cost of the improvements that to in. Replace the the HVAC system that services the first floor, and it looks to be about a hundred thousand dollars i- in in cost. Um and as you know, um the terms of the lease agreement between the the. The the foundation and the town, um a a capital improvement uh of that value. Uh requires some decisions to be made um in regards to whether the town would share in the cost or would it affect. The the duration of the lease, so I just wanted to get it before the board um. For for your thoughts, um they're not going to be doing this project until the fall. But I wanted to get it on your radar so that if you had any questions you wanted me to ask of of the foundation or wanted any additional information. Uh we could do that ahead of time, um and then at some point, um the board will need to to make a decision on how they would like to move forward. Uh in response to this request.
Thank you. Um just before anything else. Just to kind of summarize, I think, the email that we all got, um it basically says it's a twenty-year lifespan and it's eighteen years left on a lease, is that right? I don't have it up in front of me just from memory.
That's correct.
Twenty years left on lease, so like, you know, we could either uh pay ten percent or compensate ten percent or extend our lease, is that more or less?
That's more or less what Doug has proposed. Um you know, you you may have a different take on it entirely, but that's. Um sort of what what he's suggesting is a is a first. So first idea that you, you know, one or one or the other, that those two years of a useful life, the town would pay for. Or the lease extended to cover the anticipated useful life of the HVAC system, which is twenty years.
And before I save a couple of hands, before I take the questions, is there any hangup with extended at least? Is there anything like going to town meeting or anything, you know what I mean? Is there anything kind of that'll complicate that? Because, you know, when it's presented in just a simple sentence, it seems simple, but is it not simple or is it something that? Do you think we need town meeting approval to? If you don't know, I think that's fine too.
I I don't know often, I think. Was that an issue when you negotiated the lease two years ago?
It's something, you know, I'll actually go around the table because it's the first two hands are people that have more knowledge about this than I do, certainly. Um Paul, your hand is raised first.
So I raised my hand because, first of all, I found the button, hooray. Took me a while to find that. Uh I downloaded an update of the program. Uh. Isn't that, wouldn't this issue be made moot if we were able to get an earmark? Either uh federally or from the state? And have we put this on any lists for an earmark?
Yes, Paul, this this would be moot if we found other funding um in that. Um you know, this would not be an issue, and we did um as part of the request for inclusion in the economic bond bill. Um to Senator Roush's office, we did include uh this one hundred thousand dollars as one of the items uh for potential inclusion. We have not heard back from Senator Roush's office what they were able to to put into as as an uh amendment to the bill. I believe that was being debated today or yesterday, um as far as amendments, the econ- economic bond bill. But I I will note, it's it is a bond bill, so earmarks within a bond bill are not. Entirely real until we see them, but yes, we did put it forward as a request to include an earmark. Thanks, Paul.
So, wouldn't it make sense just to follow up on that? To see if we get the earmark before we make. Spend a lot of time and energy figuring out. What we have to do about extending a lease or coming up with a hundred thousand. From some other source, why why don't we let that play out? Or pu- put it another way, when do, when is this project going to be done?
They would, they'd like to do the project this fall. Um I I will say the earmark request, um it was one of the updates I was gonna provide uh later in the meeting, but I'll I'll, I can give you a summary now. Um you know, from uh reaching around to all 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 you folks as far as what what we should include in our earmark request. You you all were pretty similar in your thoughts, which was great. Um so we put in a request for farm pond uh access and stormwater improvements as priority number one for two hundred thousand. We put in a request for Sherburne historical items displayed preservation space for two hundred thousand. Uh it for number two, for number three was the HVAC system at the townhouse. For a hundred thousand, and then for four, we put in water and sewer infrastructure uh improvement contributions for the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. So there are, you know, two priorities ahead of. Uh as we presented them, a- ahead of the HVAC system for the the Sherburne Community Center. And it's it's likely looking at other, what other communities have gotten um in value as far as earmarks. Sure, it's probably in the range of two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars is what we may see in earmarks included. Um so yes, we we put this on the list uh of earmarks, but there was a couple of projects ahead of it um. And, you know, we'll we'll see. And we should know in a in a in a week or two what uh what was able to be inserted is in his earmark.
Well, just now from dealing with courts that courts like to take the position, let's not make a decision. Until there's a real dispute or there's a real need to make a decision. And so, learning from that, I'm just suggesting. Why spend a lot of energy right now? They're they're gonna be voting on this thing uh today, tomorrow. Before the end of the week is what they were projecting. So we're gonna have some more information in the next few days about wh- whether where that's going. So why make any decisions tonight?
Yep, well, Jeremy specifically said that he wasn't looking for decisions, so he was introducing the ideas to us, now giving us back raw material. And come back before us, so I think it's it's pretty consistent, and we should know the vote by then, I would think. Uh um. Okay, is uh uh Jeff, you're next?
Yeah, and now I've got more issues to bring up. Why, one and on, even if that earmark goes through, we wouldn't get the funding to start the project this fall. Remember, they have to then approve the funding. If even if the earmark gets approved, then they have to assign funding to it, right, Paul? So. It would mean that we wo- we would almost certainly not have the money to start the project this fall if we were waiting for that, so. Um we can think about that. Um second thing is. Shaun's made me aware, and we've known for a long time, that HVAC system, this building was uh. Had issues and maybe hadn't been managed properly, so one question I had is we caused them or Shaun caused them to have that onsite insight report done. Was this uh identified in the onsite insight report as a capital upgrade that was required? Do you know? You don't have to answer now, but we should check that because we, didn't we finish that report about six or eight months ago, I think, Jeremy?
Yeah, that's correct, so yeah, I I haven't reviewed that.
Just take a check to see if it's in there. It's a double, double check on onsite insight to see what they saw, but it's. Makes me wonder if they're only doing the first floor, if there's maybe a solution that's the whole building, not just the first floor. And then the other question is what Eric asked. Uh I'm not sure if we can extend the, I think the best option, we don't get an earmark is to extend the lease because. We're gonna extend the lease anyway, so why spend a hundred thousand dollars now? We're probably, you know, eighteen years from now gonna extend it anyway, but. That may take a town meeting vote, I don't know, so maybe if Paul doesn't know, maybe we can ask Petrini if we need to extend the lease.
Yeah, that's that's my thought with um, you know, we'll know when this comes before the introduction, is maybe get get a gauge what it takes to extend it. I mean, when I read the email, my first thoughts are no brainer, extend the lease, you know, I'm saying, at least two years or pay. Ten grand or twenty grand, whatever it is. Um and you know, I think it's a successful relationship with the um. With the uh community center group there, and I see no reason why not to, to be honest with you, but, all right. Uh Marion, you're next.
Uh yeah, I probably should let Sean go first because he'll probably answer my question, but um I I. I should, but I don't, I don't recall exactly uh what the contract with the community center, the the lease. Uh with the Community Center Foundation says about funding of improvements and major repairs like this. Could you just remind me? I mean, Doug's email implies that um. They're paying for it, they say the town would pay ten percent. Uh but. Uh if they're paying for it, uh and we put in for the bond bill, how does that work? I mean. Uh you would just remind me of what that arrangement is.
Well, see, they would, they would pay for it if they could pay for it over the full term of the lease, but because there's only eighteen years left in the lease. And it's a twenty-year asset, they're making the case that it's two years, they wouldn't have those extra two years to cover the cost.
Yeah, I I understand that, but if we uh are applying for money in the bond bill. It's the town applying, not this Community Center Foundation, so we're doing that just to help them out, basically, right?
That's kind of how I read it as well, to be honest with you, and um. Anyways, we didn't get a chance to debate the bond bill opening. It's not really an agenda, but it's a town meeting report, but. My thought is kind of in line with your implying. My thought is kind of in line with your implying, Marion, so let's just leave it at that. It's a fourth down there and um. I think, you know, good bet is that we're not gonna have to worry about it too much. Frankly, I think we're gonna move forward. But what's proposed in those emails, be it next week or two weeks or whatever it is, that's I suspect is gonna happen. I I get the process of wait, we'll go through it. Maybe this year Sherman gets a million dollars. We'll probably just debating, having the same debate, I think, in in uh. In a couple of weeks, and I'm so pleased to see that Farm Pond is number one. That was like by far number one on the entire list for me. It wasn't even wasn't even close, to be honest with you. Sean, you probably make and answer some questions here.
No, I I might just. Create more havoc, but I I wanna point out it it's this conversation in itself was not. Exactly the intent. At least from the town side of the way the lease was written, because that building's got a fifty year roof on it that's in like year forty nine and a half. It's due to get another roof. By this standard, you'd be extending at least fifty years um. Or they're gonna ask you to pay for two thirds of it. That's not happening. The the purpose of the Community Center Foundation is to raise money through the use of the building to to maintain the building. Um, otherwise, we should probably get back ninety percent of what we paid for that boiler. Through the library construction grant because we we ended up buying the boiler. Through the sublease. And and you know, there was a lot of money made by the Community Center Foundation while the library was there, so. That and and again, that's the purpose of it. It it wasn't intended to just continue to extend because you'd be overlapping if you if. If you give them an extra two years for the HVAC and then they spend a hundred thousand dollars on a roof, which it probably is, I guess. I I it doesn't, it doesn't really shake out. But that that's the purpose of the funds and that's why the Verizon funds stay within their. Within their books is to fund some of these things.
And I get that. In fact, the library is such a tricky situation. The library had to pay the lease to pay that, and yet the town was obligated for a lease under. You know, certain capital improvements with the lifespans that we write about here. I don't wanna revisit, I don't wanna make that any benchmark for things moving forward. Yeah, alright, that that is what it is. I I think I think we see that. I think we're also in agreement with the earmark as well. Uh, Paul, did you have anything more to add?
Yeah, so if we went out to bid for twenty years. And we signed a twenty year contract. The way that's normally done is. The the tenant pays for these improvements, but at the end of the lease period, the end of the twenty years, when it's time to renew the lease. Their proposal. Will include the accounting for assets. That would. Last after the end of the lease. So in other words. They should be advancing this money. They should be doing the improvements. And whether or not there's gonna be. A credit. For them is something that you resolve at the end of the lease. Because presumably at the end of the remaining eighteen years, we will go back out to bid. They will bid. And in terms of evaluating. Bids. One of the things that we have to take into consideration is that they made improvements. They need a credit for that. If the lease is not renewed, then we need to address the issue. Of giving them back something. But we don't need to address it today.
Yep, and I think, you know, that's consistent with the email we got here. Um, well, here's a question. Um, do you think, or I'll open it to Paul, since Paul's on season and speaking right now as well. That we should have an executive session on this um before we actually do any further, before we have a discussion. Is there anything worth talking with the contract, with anything else with the lease? Is there any uh worst seeking legal advice on this?
I think it would be helpful if we saw the lease because Marion had questions. I don't remember the lease. So it'd be nice to know what the rules of the game are here.
Yeah, I think it's worth reviewing and uh sorry. Can I say one more thing, Eric?
Yeah, go ahead, Marion, you're here.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. Um, just continuing Paul's thought. Uh, an- another sort of aspect of this that comes to mind as I was. One trying to remember exactly what the lease said uh is that um. The town still actually owns the building. They've leased it from the town, so. Uh, when it comes to say choosing an HVAC system, putting it out to bid. Is that the Community Center Foundation people that will make that uh? Really a technical judgment call or is it the town? That's my question.
I'm gonna Jeremy answer, but I'm gonna give you my first response on this is that when it comes to, this is my my thought. If they have a lease with a complete lifespan of the actual thing, they can more or less pick out the product, but I think it has to go to public procurement. So you can pick up this uh whatever, you know, type of thing you want or equal, that was something like that, that they might be responsible. They have to live with it throughout their lifespan, but it's still a public asset and has to go to public procurement. And I'll let Jeremy tell me how wrong I am.
No, no, I think you're, I think you're correct, Eric.
It makes sense there. Now, if it's half and half and if it goes outside the lease, then that's a whole nother discussion, but.
Yeah, I I need to learn a lot more about this.
We'll we'll distribute the the current lease so that you have the full language. Um, and 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 this will come back to the board. Um, if you feel that you want an executive session to 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 discuss it, we can certainly set that up too.
I'll take a look at the lease and see and see what it looks like. Maybe people can reach out to just you one on one, just on their own and. And um, let me know if there's a need for an executive session. One more thing I was gonna, just in general, I was also gonna add that I do think this has been actually a good relationship with this uh uh with the um. What a community center group here. Honestly, a nonprofit group and they set up and they took ownership of this and you know. We've always struggled to maintain buildings and uh, you know, less so now we'll have a a facilities manager, but this group does it, takes pride in it. Takes ownership on it and done a good job, so. I do, I do like that relationship.
Doug's a very good leader.
Yeah.
Alright. If there's not anything else, I'm going to move on to agenda item three. We all set?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, consideration appointments. We have Robert Wolf for Metro West Transit Authority for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. And also Robert Wolf for the Metropolitan Air uh Planning Council for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven, same day.
So I'm moved.
Second.
Moved in second and. All in favor of Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff? Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
There you go, I'm I as well. Oh, right down to the consent agenda and look at that, nine even seven thirty. Any motions relative to consent agenda?
We'll have approval.
Okay, yes, Jeff said second before the move approval. That's awesome. Alright, all in favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
And I am as well. Are there any select board reports?
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had received a letter about uh the sustainability coordinator. I'm wondering how's that hiring process going? Where? Where are we on that? What's what's going on?
I'll quickly, so Jeremy, Jeremy and I had a meeting with the Holliston um select board chair. And town administrator actually this afternoon, and Jeremy can fill in some more details, but it seemed reasonably positive. And it seemed like we were um more or less on the same page. That there'd be some kind of split, um, we could regionalize and share essentially a a full-time staff member. There's some loose talk, I don't wanna, I guess. I don't know how much I wanna say, I have loose talk, we're sure we might have a few more hours than Holliston, so it'll be more, it might be more like a. Uh, sixty forty split or sixty six, thirty three and third, something like that split and uh. And stuff like that with the hours. Uh, Jeremy, do you wanna add anything based on our conversation we had today?
Uh, yeah, I think it's it's, you know, that conversation has been positive and continuing. Um, there was a little delay um in light of um Holliston, some some activity in Holliston that distracted them from this. They had a special town meeting, some budget issues they needed to resolve, so necessarily they were distracted, but are are now back with us. Uh, pursuing this, so. It, you know, next steps being, um, you know, formalizing an IMA. Uh, Travis and I, you know, going through some more of the details based on our conversations today to put some some more details into a draft IMA. Uh, the Sherber, I mean, the the Holliston folks are gonna be bringing it um before the their select board at their next meeting in July. And and getting, you know, the full um consensus of the board uh of their board. Um, I think we've been chatting about it for a while, so I'm I'm pretty comfortable that that you're all supportive of it. Uh, but we would certainly bring back, um, before long, we would bring back the details of an IMA between Sherburne and Holliston to to you folks.
If I could just comment on this, that. The town decided some years ago that there was a value to having a sustainability coordinator. And with all the stuff that's going on with climate change and the very heat that we're engaged in now and all these things that are going on. And the grants that are available and could be pursued. I think it's important, we have a sustainability coordinator and we not leave the position. Vacant. And when we were doing the transfers. There was fifty three thousand dollars of sustainability money that hadn't been spent. So it looks like the position has been vacant for a while. I assume that comes from from vacancy. I wanna encourage us all to to uh. Get a sustainability coordinator up and running as soon as we can. Thank you for the report.
Been working on today.
I think this would help do that, Paul, because I actually with Jeremy had the same conversation almost a year ago, I think, Jeremy, if I recall, with Holliston. Because you see, we'll have, it's hard to hire sustainability coordinators right now because of the reasons you just outlined. Because it's such a high demand and we'll have high turnover if we aren't able to offer benefits. So by doing a combined position, we'll make this role much more attractive to candidates and. Much will be much more likely to have a stronger and more permanent uh. Person fill the role if it's a more attractive role. So while there's a delay. I think there's a huge benefit to to uh doing this with Hollison and making it um more stable position. And more attractive position.
Great.
And I'm pretty positive on the conversation. I actually give Sherburne good service. Like I said, we'll probably get a few more as uh based on, you know, we thought the needs were. But also, sure, um, also doesn't have physical space. We actually have a desk and a computer ready to go. So even working in halls and stuff to be sitting in Sherburne, so there actually would kind of be that. Immediate just access to the person and um. Kind of like integrated into town hall and I think uh I think it'd be actually um. The number not be very beneficial to Sherburne, I really do. And it'd be very integrated into our staff and I was very pleased about that.
There's one other benefit too, is that we would share the cost, which is helpful. But I think, as you know better than we do, Paul, the state is very interested in funding regional initiatives. So it might also increase our probability of success in getting grants if it's a benefit to two towns, not just one.
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, um. Any other select board reports? Alright, how about town administration reports? Looks like we have four down to three. That's a very tall one.
Yeah, we're picking them off as we go. Uh, thanks, Eric. Um, yeah, we've been having a standing update for the redway reconstruction of Washington and Maple Street, the intersection. Um, if you've been by there lately, uh, if you've gotten through the detour or walked uh to look at it, you can see there's been a lot of progress made. Uh, it's looking in great shape. Um, curbing is in, curbing and it. Boy, when you put the curving and edging in it, it just really looks like an intersection. Um, you can see the roundabout, you can see the the corners of the intersection. Uh, you know, all the underground drainage is done, the curbing's in, base pavement is in. There's you two utility poles that have been that are in process of being relocated and the wires um. Uh, thank you to Sean for that. He's really uh been been able to get them to jump. Uh, much faster than our neighbors has been able to get utility companies to jump, so thank you, Sean. They will be pouring, we mentioned at a prior meeting, they're gonna be pouring a sample, sample slabs of what. That colored stamped concrete would look like. Uh, hopefully within the week, um, we'll we'll have those samples poured. We'll let you know where they are so you can all take a look. And. Also, they should be um getting uh the supplies in for the library stairs, the stairs between town hall and the library. The same contractor is gonna be doing that replacement work. Um, they should be getting supplies in to start that work uh within the next couple of weeks. Um, and then one final thing from me and then Sean can fill fill in anything I missed, but. There's been an idea uh about placing. A monument within the center of the roundabout and it it seems like a pretty neat idea. So George Fisk is is proposing. I'm not sure if you focus or aware of the Leland Obelisk Obelisk. Um, it's sort of a, it's a spire, it's about nine feet tall, four by four at the base, uh, stone. Um, it's in the sort of the front yard of the ECDC. Preschool uh near Washington Street. It's a town-owned monument apparently, but George was suggesting maybe that would be a nice focal point within the center of the roundabout. So we've. Uh, I asked our traffic consultant if there's any sort of safety issues with that, or is any design standard that might be violated? Uh, they had their national roundabout expert uh look at it and uh it appears that this is a viable option for for us to consider. So, you know, maybe there's some uh at night, maybe some lighting, some uplighting to to make it more visual and landscaping around it. Um, so just wanted to bring that to the board's attention that. You know, I think we we may have this on on a future agenda to see, to maybe get more of your your formal support, but. Um, very interesting idea, timely idea. Um, and and just wanted to to kind of raise it up um. Uh, as soon as we're we're sort of sort of hearing this, investigating it, so. Uh, did I miss anything on the intersection, Sean?
I don't think so. Chip seal on two.
Alright, you got your chip seal, the uh, there was a news uh blast that went out for the chip seal that's currently going on. Mill Street, Hall Street and Upper Forest Street. That was uh works going on today and and into tomorrow as well, Sean.
Yeah, it's looked like they're gonna uh. End up going into Monday. Believe it or not, there was just enough rain today, they 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 washed the whole day away. They got, they got nothing done. Uh. So they'll make up some of that tomorrow. And then uh probably have to finish Forest Street on on Monday.
Okay, so that means by the end of, I don't know, mid to end of next week, the sweepers would be out after there's some time for the stone to set.
Yeah, oh, definitely. Well, yeah, they'll actually, I mean, we'll we'll be out Monday. Still, because Hollis Street's been down. It needs two full days to cure before we can touch it. So Hollis Street will be ready. Uh, Mill Street will be ready on Monday. Cause it'll it'll get finished tomorrow, so. Yeah, by 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 later next week, Forest Street, and it takes multiple, multiple shots, as everyone remembers, just kind of marbles rolling around for a couple of weeks.
It is. I drove on it today to help it, you know, pack it down.
Thank you. The traffic actually is what helps.
You finalize the snowplow in December.
Yeah.
My paint job shows all the chips in it. Alright, um. Three, three questions real quick. Stamp concrete, is that the section between the slope and the inner circles between the slope curbing? And the vertical being on the inside of the circle? That's it? Okay, text me when you get those samples. I would like to, you know, I'm gonna have a opinion about those samples. Um, the library steps, what are happening to the old slate pieces there? Cause they look like they still have value, even though like some are are.
So we're gonna save them, uh, we're gonna try and save them. There's quite a few that are still good. There was some discussion with the library. Uh, what were they? The landscape subcommittee about? Possibly using some of them as pavers for a a small patio that could go up front in in the front of the library. Uh, kind of at the top of the hill. But I, we're not gonna, we're not gonna scrap them right now. We're gonna stalk them.
Okay, cool. Very good. And lastly, um, my only hesitation will talk more about putting a statue in the middle of it. Is actually the stamped, is actually the sloped curb. I know it's a vertical curb, but if anyone's ever seen the Bourne Rotary. And when people drink too much in the cape and then the tires go up and wrap the middle every now and then, someone's just gonna drive up the middle of that rotary. It'll probably be in the first year. Someone's just seen him who's used to it and has had a few too many in a Friday night is going to go into that rotary, just so you know, so. It depends on how valuable you think the, you know, the statue is or how um. I don't know, crash proof it is. That's my only concern about the statue.
That and that was brought up obviously by the engineer as well. Is how replaceable it is.
Every roundabout ever has, that's gonna have that.
I mean, the the obelisk is, you know, it's it's unique. Uh, it's made out of stone. Uh, if if a car hit, it's 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 pretty massive. I mean, it would need to be a pretty good strike to knock it over. But if it did fall over, it would stay within the the inner circle of the roundabout. It wouldn't fall into other traffic, so. That's a good thing. Hopefully, nobody hits it. If it does go there, hopefully, nobody hit, but.
Oh, it would, it would stop the drunk driver.
Yes, it would. Right in front of the police station too. Okay, um, staffing updates. Okay, um, staffing updates. Was that, was that it? Maybe, did we already talk about it? We're talking about the uh?
Well, you talked about the sustainable, already, I just want to uh, you know, make the, the board aware, the conservation agent and the assistant COA director positions are posted. And um, we've slowly getting some applications for those, um, but we'll, we'll need to reconsider how we're advertising for those. We haven't gotten the, the whole deluge of, of applicants for those positions.
What are your thoughts on regionalizing a conservation agent? Um, I, I know it's controversial, we had a part-time one forever. And then frankly, I'll just say it outright, David snuck in with, well, yeah, with the chair there, a full-time one, so he couldn't undo it when he went to advisory, otherwise be becoming a job. And then since it's gone full-time, we haven't held it more than like a month or whatever. What are your thoughts for uh, regionalizing that?
I, I think it's a good idea. Um, there, there had been some discussions with the town of Medfield to share a conservation agent. Uh, unfortunately, that didn't go far with the Conservation Commission in Medfield. Um, it was supported by the Conservation Commission here in Sherburne. Medfield, I think, has updated their budget to include um, a, a full-time conservation agent. But yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Um, currently it's budgeted for thirty-five hours a, a week for our conservation agent. Um, however, you know, the Joyce has been able to help out and uh, in, in the interim and, you know, she doesn't, you know, consume nearly that, that number of hours, so.
That's something, if you got someone pretty, sorry. If you got someone pretty qualified, offered a competitive salary, a competitive full-time, everything else. My, my, my sense is that, you know, you wouldn't need full-time, uh, those full hours, you know, and assuming they can fluctuate. Maybe one, one week, it's like thirty hours Sherburne and ten another town and vice versa, you know what I mean? Things like that, that, you know. There's some ability to a, to, you know, ebb and flow, um. I don't know, if there's still an opportunity for some nearby community, I mean, I.
There's only so many neighboring communities to, to, to do that with. Medfield was, was gonna be a good choice, but they've decided to go in a different direction.
Can, can I suggest that it doesn't need to be a neighboring community? That what I've seen is, is a joint but communities not contiguous. So what difference does it make? Yeah, it's, it's a convenient drive for the conservation agent to like go across the bridge to Dover and then come back to Sherburne or go to Holliston and so on. But what difference does it make if they have to drive one more time over? Or two more towns over?
Yep, I was gonna, just about to suggest that. I think that's definitely, especially something, in fact, if anything, it kind of eliminates, or not all, but most conflict of interest you may have, especially something like this was a land use type thing. Um, you get a budding properties and, you know, last thing we need is Medfield complaining about Paul's cows walking down the road or doing something like that, so.
They've done that.
I know. So, you know, sometimes not being a budding might be a good thing too. Uh, Jeff, did you have?
Well, this is sort of on the topic, but a little bit off topic. I just wanted people to, to note what you saw earlier tonight, that the new Board of Health Agent Jessica is outstanding. She, she also just got her master's in public health and she worked in the Board of Health in Needham. Which is a pretty strong, well-managed town in my view. So, and I think you saw how uh, well she responded to questions about the budget and uh, things she was looking to improve, so. She's, she's not here, Daryl's not here, but I just thought I'd let you know, she's, she's a keeper. She, we're, we're lucky that we uh, were able to land her.
Yeah, I can definitely see that. Look forward to it. All right, um, anything else on staffing updates?
No, good there. Um, I think we touched on the economic development bond bill um, prior in your agenda, but happy to answer any questions on that. We should hear you know, soon whether any of our earmarks were, were, and what earmarks made it into the economic development bond bill. Um, but the final update uh, is for the North Sherburne Water Sewer District. And some meetings that Marion and I have had related to that. Um, Marion, do you want to give any update on, on?
Uh, actually, I was just gonna make a quick comment about the staffing update. Can I go back to that for a moment? Um, you know, I've, I've been in and out of the uh, the land use district down in the lower level of town hall, uh, here now and then quite a bit and um, and I actually met Jessica down there and yes, she is great. And when I met her, I thought, wow. Um, she agreed to work in this town even though that office is really kind of uh, overwhelmingly crowded and a little bit of a rabbit Warren down there. Uh, and it, it's, it's nobody's fault, you know, it was a tough move and a lot of tough decisions that I think were the right ones. And uh, Sean did a lot to make that happen and and everyone is working well down there, I think, but the impression when you go in there is that uh, it really could be organized a little better and be a more attractive, a more attractive place to work. Just from the point of view of attracting people to positions like Board of Health or Concom. So, uh, it's just a comment, uh, you know, I don't want to get into a discussion about it, but it's something that we might think about.
I remember Marion, those people were in a third of that space prior to moving downstairs. That's, that's three times the space they used to have.
Well, not, not quite.
Yeah, no, I know what it's, four hundred square feet.
I know, I know what it is in square feet, but, but in fact, the uh, you know, it, it's partly because it's the lower level, the ceiling's lower, it has a lot of other difference in feeling about it, but anyway, what I'm saying is that uh, we might be able to figure out a way to make it a more uh, functional, attractive place for the people who work there.
Yeah, but Marion, we, we aren't done, we, we're not done fitting out that space yet. Um, there's plans to, to put in a more formal uh, counter space as you walk in for, for customer support to help divide, uh, you know, provide an area for, for the customers to spread out plans and so forth, also more um, differentiation between the public and the, the staffing space. There's still a lot of filing cleanup yet to do and we have an earmark and grants to help with that, 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 that works ongoing. Um, so there's still a fair amount of work left to do down there to make that space more usable and, and more organized, so.
Good.
On Sean's to-do list, some of those things.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't want to put it all on Sean, cause he's done it.
He's got a lot on his plate, so.
If I could, it takes willing participants to, and Jessica started her first week with emptying file cabinets and, and graciously begging me to get them out of there.
Good.
That, that's been a huge um, topic too, because a lot of space is taken up by file cabinets that didn't need to be there.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, oh, North Sherburne Waters.
Yeah.
Okay, where does it stand? Well, I think I told you before that it's now in the, in the house, the Massachusetts House. And uh, who knows if it'll be voted before the end of the session? Let's hope it will. I feel after it received, you know, good, good uh, treatment in the subcommittee that it went through, that I think there's no question it will be passed, uh, but we can't say when. Uh, Jeremy and I.
The Joint Committee of Municipalities and Local Government reported favorably on the bill.
Yes.
And now it's it's now before the House Steering and Policy and Scheduling Committee. I believe that's to schedule the, the final hearings.
Oh, great. It still has to be uh, approved by the Senate as well, right?
Correct.
And the governor.
And the governor and uh, the House and Senate, I think, hopefully before the end of the month when they go on vacation. Uh, we shall see. But it's, uh, you know, I, I'm confident. Uh, I think we all can be confident it will be approved, it's a matter of when. Jeremy and I have met with uh, the Natick Affordable Housing uh, committee a couple of evenings ago. And uh, briefly presented it to them and um, they were also quite positively disposed and are willing to write a letter of support to the Natick Select Board that will have to approve the IMA. So I think when our IMA discussions come around, that's gonna be a helpful thing. Uh, Jeremy, what else?
We've had another meeting with uh, the Natick, some select board representatives and town administration uh, about the sewer connection. That last meeting also included uh, Toll Brothers. Um, I think that was a productive discussion as well. Um, that spurs into follow-up action. Um, and um, yeah, I think those are the major updates. I think there's been some good meetings and good progress recently.
The, the two parties, that is Natick uh, Select Board and well, Natick DPW and Select Board and Toll Brothers have uh, both put forward uh, mitigation estimates, that's what Toll Brothers is willing to pay Natick for improvements uh, above and beyond the infrastructure. And uh, and vice versa, uh, Natick is making an ask of Toll Brothers and they're, they're not together yet, but it's only the beginning of that discussion. Uh, is that correct, Jeremy, would you say?
Yeah, I think that's correct. I, I think they're not as far off uh, as, as it may at first appear.
Yeah, I, I'm confident too that.
And I think that, that support of the Natick Affordable Housing Trust is gonna, is gonna go a long way as well.
Right, and uh, other than that, I, I can um, report that in, in one of these various meetings, I heard the story of Jeremy's um, sailing adventure. And if you haven't heard it, you really have to ask him, it's really something.
Rescue and sea you're talking about?
Yeah, he, he's a hero.
Yes, but it's, it's even more than that. I mean, he may, he may not have returned. I can tell you, we're lucky to have him back.
Yeah, there is.
It was crazy. Anyway.
Happy to talk about it with anybody. It's uh, was quite an adventure.
Yeah.
We'll be back, but it was really a great experience.
Okay.
We'll talk to you about that more offline, Jeremy.
So can I make my usual motion at this point or?
All right, Ed. I'm truly, I'll probably nay it, but go ahead.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Uh, Steven?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi, in spite of having a great all-time.
The bad news is, the good news you adjourned, the bad news is we, we're re-journing in uh, four days or it is on Monday night.
I'm just gonna say nay, cause it's before eight o'clock and it's just, you know.
We won't see you in two weeks, we'll see you in four days.
Look forward to it. I'm gonna be here. Okay. Wait, we adjourned. Um, I can state this, it has to do with the uh, meeting schedule, so I think I can state this, no matter what, or it has to do with it. I'll talk more, Jeremy. I'll just make a statement, you can do it. So I do expect it's gonna be a pretty hot meeting on Monday. And, and gonna have, we well attended. I get that vibe already. Um, I'm gonna ask for a particular order on that day, that people use the raise hand functions. I'm gonna, you know, take questions from the select board, I'm gonna take questions of public. I'm gonna try to take people who have not spoken before, I'm gonna try to be very orderly about it. I may ask Jeremy what we can do about like mandatory, like mandatory mutes and they have to request on mute or things like that. I have to be cautious on them. You know, people going out of line or shouting out, you know, things have been pretty good, but I've done enough of these hot meetings before that I want to make sure we have some good order to it and control. And everyone's gonna get a chance to speak, and I always do that. And, you know, and whatever, you know what I mean, but um, I know it's too late now, but I know Framingham does something called a webinar format, which actually um, helps control some of that. Um, I want to make sure that we lock down sharing, not that, that you actually can't have outsiders, you know, share anything like that, and there's a few different things. Guess I'll talk, I can talk to Jeremy and Diane.
Trick too is you can, it's quicker to silence all, to mute everyone. And then you could only unmute the five select board members or whatever, so it's the quickest thing, cause sometimes if you have multiple distractions, you just click mute all.
But you can make it such that they cannot unmute themselves after you request to mute.
Yeah.
And I don't think that, oh, you know, that's a special feature, I think when you set up the machine.
Yes.
There, there are some settings we can change for, for Monday, Eric, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that. Um, all right. And that, and that's all I was gonna say again, not really part of me, more about just setting up the meeting and the schedule and so on like that. And also control the expectations, this is because I want it to be a, an orderly meeting and I want this to, you know, serve its function for education, okay?
We have an executive session beforehand too.
Yes, we do.
So just a thought, Eric. Most of my time, at the end of a meeting, the chair pretty much does what you do. They say, here's when the next select board meeting is going to be. And kind of preview, if you know what the agenda items are gonna be. So you might consider having a new agenda item for the end of every meeting, which is just report on next select board meeting.
See, you mentioned it before, I get concerned, it locks you in a little bit. Sometimes we've had flexibility, look at this, look at this meeting right here on the fifteenth. In case we gotta do emergency meetings, you know what I mean? We have to get together. I, I worry a little bit about that. Cause we, you know, we haven't done it before, we didn't do it, you know, since I've been on the board and um, and I get it, I get that it's kind of good form, but most people are kind of logged off. And uh, it kind of locks down flexibility. So you say, the next one's in two weeks, boom, we have an emergency thing pop up. We have to do the forty-eight hour, we have to get a meeting. Then someone's gonna tell me, hey, you said the next meeting was such and such time.
You can say subject to an emergency. Our next planned meeting at this point is.
I'll think, I'll, I'll take your advisement, I think the downsides could outweigh the upsides, cause it hasn't been an issue yet, you know, it hasn't been an issue um, in the seven years I've been on. Maybe it's nice to do, um, I'll, I'll, especially when something hot comes up, I certainly would like to talk about it. This next one, honestly, I wish I talked about this before, people can see this recording. But I wish I mentioned this before. I can't talk too much, cause we are adjourned and you can always talk about scheduling, so I don't want to talk too much about substance, any substance issue, to be honest with you right now.
If you had done the agenda item that I'm talking about, your
Yeah.
The presentation you just made would have been a legitimate agenda discussion.
I get, it just, it feels like it's solving a problem that doesn't exist. You know what I mean?
A lot of towns do.
Nothing on that. All right, um, I'm gonna vote nay on the adjournment and uh, let's go.
Mr. Young.
Monday.
Ciao.